We'll call a meeting in order, please. Vice. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Township of Old Bridge Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, October 4, 2018. Adequate notice of this meeting, the Old Bridge Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Beans Act at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting by prominently posting in the municipal complex an announcement giving the time, the date, the location, and the agenda of this meeting, also by mailing such announcement to the Home News and Tribune, finally by filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal. Ms. Silverman, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Duhers?
Here.
Ms. Killa?
Here.
Mr. Stoner?
Present.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Ms. Shepherd-Lee?
Here.
Mr. Stoner?
Here.
Ms. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Robertson?
Here.
Ms. Stewart?
Yes.
Thank you. Board members, we have seated with us tonight Phil Robertson Esquire sitting in for Mr. Sachs who couldn't make it this evening. We look forward to your guidance, sir, and advice on handling this one application we had before this evening. If you have an agenda in front of you, we're going to go right as it is written. Number two on the agendas of resolutions, we'll start with the first one, it's thirty-eight sixteen Z. Premier Media LLC Whispering Woods Settlement, Mr. Robertson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution memorializing the settlement agreement between Premier Media LLC and the board. As the board will recall, Premier Media had filed a lawsuit in an action called Premier Media LLC versus Township of Old Bridge Zoning Board of Adjustment. They were appealing the denial of an application for the board, and that application was for D1 C variances preliminary and final site plan approval for property known as Block 5000 Lot 3 located at the Gateway Shopping Center on State Highway Route 9 South. The litigation was agreed to be settled pursuant to court order dated July 30th, 2018, entered by the Honorable James P. Hurley, and that order of settlement was approved during a Whispering Woods settlement that took place on September 6th of this year, which was duly noticed. As the board will recall, this had to do with the construction of the outdoor advertising sign, variances and the called variances and D1 variances that were required. It was a hearing that took place in 2016, November 2016. There were various memorandums and reports that were considered, evidence that was taken, and pursuant to the settlement that was placed on the record by the applicant's counsel, Peter Klausert, which was reflected also in the court order dated July 30th, 2018, and was made part of this record, and essentially that settlement proposed the following. The applicant's complaint is withdrawn with prejudice. Two, the board will grant the D1 variance, C1 variances, and preliminary and final site plan approval to construct an outdoor advertising sign subject to compliance with all the recommendations contained in the July 30, 2018 court order as follows. The lights illuminating the outdoor advertising sign should be turned off no later than 10:30 PM, ensuring that they are on. Two, the outdoor advertising sign is opposed to contain a static display. Plaintiff agreed not to seek approval to modify, same to an LED display, provided however that nothing herein shall prevent a future owner of the outdoor advertising sign from applying to Township of Old Bridge or the board for approval to change the outdoor advertising sign to an LED display. Third, the plaintiff shall make an SFR deposit with the defendant, the township, or the board, in an amount of $6,000 to be utilized for reimbursement of litigation costs and in accordance with the municipal land use law for professional costs associated with this matter. Next, the applicant agreed to comply with all of the technical recommendations contained in the staff report and memorandum referenced earlier in this resolution. It also reflects that no individual testified during the public portion of the Whispering Woods hearing. Now therefore be resolved by the zoning board adjustment attached to Old Bridge today's date, October 4, 2018. The board hereby confirms this resolution, the action taken by the board on September 6th, 2018, granting the application of Premier Media LLC for the D1 variances, C variances, and preliminary and final site plan approval for the Whispering Woods hearing. That is essentially the resolution memorializing the settlement agreement.
Mr. Robertson, board members, you've heard the resolution. Someone want to move this for approval?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Duhers?
Yes.
Ms. Killa?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Ten dash eighteen Z, Two Girls Water Works Road LLC, councillor?
This is a resolution memorializing the action that was taken that took place on July 19th, 2018. It's an application of Two Girls Water Works Road LLC. The application, they applied for the following relief. The applicant will seek a major preliminary and final site plan approval with D1 use variances and C variances in order to develop the property with a concrete batch plant and related site improvements. The applicant required four separate C variances, front yard setback along Cheese Creek Road, front yard setback along Old Water Works Road, minimum landscape ratio, screening, fence along open storage area, or also a number of design waivers, three design waivers to be specific, a driveway width, sidewalks, light fixture mounting heights. In addition, there's D1 use variance required because the concrete batch plant is not permitted use in the SD. The resolution references the various professional reports that were considered, the exhibits that were considered, and then summarizes the testimony of Mr. Brian Murphy, the applicant's professional engineer, Mr. David Roberts, the applicant's professional planner, Mr. John Jar, who provided professional traffic testing. There's also a representation, the applicant agreed to comply with all the recommendations contained in the memorandum of the township board planner, Vina Sawan, and the fellow Shapiro, the township's professional engineer, except as other letters have it appear. The board determined that the requested relief could be granted, and the resolution provides that the board hereby confirms by this resolution the action taken by the board on July 19th, granting the application Two Girls Water Works LLC the major site plan preliminary and final approval with D1 and C variances and design waivers, as already referenced. The conditions, subject to following conditions, the applicant shall comply with recommendations attached to planner and attached to engineer as contained in the reports submitted to the board, to the extent that the reports do not conflict with any other conditions contained herein, and shall submit revised plans and reports for those reports. Two, the applicant shall comply with all representations made by her on behalf of the applicant here in here. Number three, the applicant shall pay all taxes, fees, required SFR deposits, and the order. Number four, the applicant shall secure any and all other approvals, licenses, permits required by any of the board agents or entity having jurisdiction. Number five, the applicant agreed to resurface Old Water Works Road in front of the subject site, seeking your approval of the professional staff. Number six, the applicant agreed to provide a right-of-way dedication width on Cheese Creek Road of thirty feet. Number seven, the applicant will comply with all care pollution requirements and obtain any permits prior to receiving a certificate of occupancy. And number eight, the applicant agreed that the garage will always service, repair, and maintain vehicles utilized on-site for cement operation. That is the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Board members, you've heard the resolution. Someone want to move the memorialization?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Wait, wait, wait.
Is he here?
He's here.
Sure?
No.
Maybe he wasn't.
You were not here.
I was not here, sorry. I take that back.
I'll move it, please. One second.
I should have known that.
But thanks, I mean.
Thanks, just trying.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Killa?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, board member, eight and threes minutes. We have four of them, we'll do them individually, July 9th, 2016. I hope everyone has had a chance to review them. Absent any comments or suggestions of additions or deletions, I'd ask someone to move it. I'll move it. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, as to July 19th.
Mr. Walker, I'm sorry, Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Schubler?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. The word same applies to August 2, 2018. Someone want to move it for memorialization?
I'll move it.
Mr. Stoner, who's the second?
Second.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Duhers?
Yes.
Ms. Killa?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd-Lee?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Board member, September 6th, 2018. Someone want to move it?
Motion.
Second.
Moved the second, roll call, please.
Ms. Duhers?
Yes.
Ms. Killa?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd-Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. And finally, September 20th, 2018.
I'll move it.
Second.
Mr. Stoner, Ms. Killa, please, roll call.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Duhers?
Yes.
Ms. Killa?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd-Lee?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Board members, under discussions under our number four, we have two areas, October 18th, 2018. We only have two Cs on that night, is that what this is, and you're going to make a second half, a special meeting?
Correct. Yes, they're going to come on, this is a special meeting in Perry Park.
Okay. And professionals will be here?
Yes.
Everybody remember that word from the last meeting, we discussed that?
Uh huh.
No? Yes?
Yes, everybody remembers.
All right, if there's somebody saying no. Okay, we don't need to rule on that. We don't have to vote on that, it's just a matter of...
Yeah.
November 1, 2018. If you're watching at home, that will not be televised that night, however, the reason is because it's going to be held in room 201, which is upstairs here in the Estelino, if anyone wants to attend, it is still open to the public, but it will not be televised. And board members, for your knowledge, November 1, we'll be upstairs, same time, 7:30.
But it will be filmed and shown on the later table?
Oh, they're going to videotape it, but they're not going to show block? Okay. So you can see that later, I guess, on YouTube, right? Is that where they come up?
Yes.
I believe they did. Item number five's continuance is thirteen dash eighteen Z, Wawa Inc. That's 3600 U.S. Highway 9, that's in the EDO 3 zone. That's for major site plan preliminary and final with D. It's existing convenience store with fuel adding a diesel dispenser and the installation of a fuel storage tank. Obviously, we all know, and countrymen, as you sit here know that the building already exists, they want to put in a diesel for it. So that's a D variance. If you're here on that matter, if it's not going to be heard this evening, it will be continued, January 10th, 2019, it will be further notice. So if you're here this evening, it's not going to be heard. Next one is twenty, twelve dash eighteen Z, Fountains at OB LLC. That's Three Mill Road for sixty-eight age-restricted townhomes, that's in an R20 zone. It's two, three-story buildings with clubhouse, pool, gazebo, et cetera, requiring three variances for use. The applicant on that matter is being, is listed to be continued to November 1, 2018, without further notice. If you're here on that matter this evening, Fountains at OB LLC, it's not going to be heard tonight, it will go on the agenda, November 1, 2018, without further notice. The last continuance is thirty-six dash fourteen Z, and that's Pleasant Valley Acres LLC. That is Pleasant Valley Road and County Route 527, that's in the R120 zone. That is for one hundred and forty-five age-restricted condominiums dwellings, units for sale with clubhouse, pool, and recreational facilities for passive and active recreation. Obviously, that would also need a D variance. The applicant in that matter is asking to be continued to a little date, to a later date, I'm sorry, and that's a little vague, so we're going to assign a date, correct? The same? We're going to assign March 7th, 2019 for that matter. There will be further notice, correct? So if you're here on Pleasant Valley Acres, that obviously isn't going to be heard this evening either. It will go on the calendar, however, for March 7th, 2019, there will be further notice. That brings us to our final item on the agenda this evening, that's the zoning application. I'll read that into the record, it's four dash sixteen Z, RLG LLC. That's at 475 Homero Road to modify second-floor use of an existing building for music instruction and band rehearsal. It's in the R15 zone, it's to be an A and a D variance. The applicant is being represented by Peter Plaza from the firm of Highland Paper. Sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and your professional staff. For the record, Peter Klausert with the firm Highland Paper on behalf of RLG. This is a piece of property which received approval from this board in 2000 for use variance relief and preliminary and final site plan approval to construct a building, and inside of the building, the proposed use was in furtherance of the performing arts of various different kinds, dancing, voice, karate, and the applicant has been operating that way for a number of years. The building was built and they've been operating. As part of their, the development of the property, the second floor had employee, like lounge area, some offices, and that was part of the prior approval, as it was described. In the business, the applicant has seen a need to provide an area for the music students that are there, the vocal students that are there, to actually then, you know, ply their craft, practice with other people that are operating, other people playing instruments. And the second floor is an opportunity to do that, provide two music rooms, rehearsal rooms, recording room, I guess would be the best way to think about it, a separate voice room, and then there's a control room to control the equipment upstairs. So that's what's proposed on the second floor. The applicant, as part of that, in understanding from their clientele what it is that they need, is asking for this board to modify the hours of operation. The hours of operation last time were decided by the applicant and the board based on the proposed uses, the dance school after kids get out of school, you know, four o'clock to nine o'clock, and on Saturday mornings when kids are able to go to the dance schools and their music lessons. But it appears that, to the applicant, and Dr. Griggs will come up in a little bit and talk to the board about this, that the use of the recording areas by appointment will be off those hours. They'll be later, you can imagine, older people that have jobs and are in a band that want to practice would be there later in the evening, so we want to ask for the hours to be expanded. And then serious recording, somebody that's really doing that, anticipate would be somebody that's doing it during the week, during the day, before the dance and normal music lessons are occurring. So we're asking for the hours of operation to be modified to be Monday through Saturday, Sundays off, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. That coincides also with your ordinance quiet hours, the 10:00 at night. We're allowed to start making noise in Old Bridge at 7:00 in the morning, but by 10:00 is when we want to, the ordinance wants us to quiet town. So it coincides to give that time during the day when some recording may occur or rehearsal may occur by somebody who's serious about this, and then later in the evening, kind of the after dinner, honey, I'm going to band practice type of hour. And then the regular operations that are occurring now, the applicant anticipates would stay the same, as far as the music instruction that occurs and the dance occurs, that those hours stay the same. I have four witnesses this evening. Dr. Griggs is one witness, he's going to talk to about the operations, RLG is Dr. Griggs, that's his business, he's the managing member of the LLC. We also have Roy Krakenbush, who's responsible for the design of the second floor and the sound attenuation as part of that. And then we have Frank Miskovich, who's a traffic expert. Frank's going to talk about the parking, and he's going to use some of the testimony that we get from Dr. Griggs to tell you that the parking out there, that's there, is going to continue to service the need. And then, of course, we have Allison to provide the planning testimony. This is a D variance. The use that we're proposing, I think, is consistent with the performing arts that were granted previously, but we are going to a different part of the building. One item that I forgot to mention is, when the applicant was before the board last time, back in 2000, there was an occupancy limit placed on the building of forty-two persons, thirty-six students and six instructors. The applicant is not asking, that is not asking for that to be modified. We will continue to respect that occupancy limit because we know that it was tied to the parking ratio, so we don't want to change that. And we believe that that can be accomplished, as I indicated, because the proposed expansion to the second floor is not going to overlap with the existing uses. So we don't require any relief with regard to the occupancy, we can continue to comply with that. So, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to bring up Dr. Griggs, have him sworn, share with you his affiliation to the company, and talk about how this came to be.
Mr. Johnson, raise the board turn, I swear to you.
Dr. Griggs, you solemnly swear testimony before this board should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you please state your full name, spell your last name, right?
Robert Griggs, G-R-I-G-G-S.
Have a seat. If you could talk, I mentioned that this RLG is, you're the managing member of RLG, this is your business, you're familiar with the operations that are going on at the site there, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And if you could just share with the board a little bit about how this came to be, how you realized that there was a need for this from your students and even members of the community?
Well, we had, previously, we had the dance studio running, and we had students that were interested in music as well, and we saw the two kind of work well together. And so we were permitted to provide music instruction on the first floor along with the dance group, primarily guitar and voice lessons, as you can imagine, with all these shows on TV, voice has become very popular. So a majority of what we were teaching is voice and guitar, a little bit of drum, but mostly voice and guitar, and we also have piano instruction, but again, even that's limited. So one of the things that was happening was that we were having to refer out our voice, our voice students for recording to an outside recording studio, and we thought it would be pretty neat if we could do that in-house. We've also had requests to do band rehearsal and stuff within the facility. The first floor just didn't accommodate that because the rooms are small.
Thank you. So you anticipate that there will be, that these rooms will be utilized on the second floor for this band rehearsal, and those rooms would be utilized on a by appointment basis only?
Correct.
You heard me discuss in my opening how, and it's information that I got from you, you anticipate, from what you've learned from your students, that the type of rehearsal use of these would be off when you have your normal dance session from that 4 to 6:30, 7:00, when you're busy there?
Right. Primarily, what happens on the dance side is between 4:30 and about 6:00 is, those are when the younger kids dance, so typically, they're there for an hour. Parents, most of them will stay for that period of time because the child's only there for an hour. The older kids might come in at 4:00 or 4:30, but stay till 9:00 because they're rehearsing three or four hours for dance in the evening. So those kids are typically drop-off and pick-up kids. So after 6:00, the traffic slows down there, and it's mostly the older children that are there for a long period of time.
Now, the band rehearsal that occurs upstairs, not only will your clientele be using that, but you're going to have a full-time person that's there as, anytime that that area is being utilized?
Correct.
Okay, so. I mentioned that there was an occupancy limit previously, and based on what you anticipate will be the use of the upstairs and your existing use, you have no issue continuing to comply with that occupancy?
No, because we can skew the hours in accordance with what's going on.
You'll control the use of those rooms via that appointment?
Yes.
Okay. You did, just anecdotally, board, you did, we visited the site together, you've been out at the site to listen to the Route 18 traffic noise, you had a decibel meter that you used out there to listen to the noise, and the ambient noise from the Newark flight pattern and Route 18 is not modified when we're playing music inside or anything like that?
Correct.
Those were your observations with your own ears and with the meter?
Yes.
Okay. And part of the construction of the upstairs, and we'll have Mr. Krakenbush talk about this, but part of the proposed construction upstairs is that those rooms will be attenuated, the sound will be attenuated through construction methods?
Correct.
And that's beneficial not only to the exterior, but actually, that's what band members want?
It's purely selfish, actually, because by attenuating the sound, you're preventing the sound from coming in. We were recording seventy decibels of sound outside between air traffic and Route 18 traffic, which is pretty loud. Actually, standing out in the parking lot, we were talking, it was, we were having a hard time talking to each other, just from the traffic.
Just what's going on in there?
And then, you know, running, running a sound test didn't change the decibel level at all.
It was painful to walk in the room where he had the speaker on upstairs, and it may don't, no modification outside.
Between 115 and 120 decibels upstairs, which is a point where your ears start to become damaged, and so you just don't hear that outside.
Now, we're not introducing loud music. It exists. It exists when the kids are dancing, right? They're playing music, that's their matter.
Currently, right now, downstairs where the sound isn't attenuated, it's just cement block walls and windows, they blast the music in those dance rooms, and even that is not an issue.
We're going on fifteen-plus years or so of operation there. How many times have the police been out there for noise violations, noise complaints?
Never.
You have your neighbors knocking on your door and complaining about noise?
No.
Okay. If you don't have anything further you want to add that I missed, I want to make Dr. Griggs available to the board to answer some of your questions.
Do you have anything of Dr.?
Yes.
Sorry.
So, the band rehearsal rooms, they would be rented for outsiders, or would it be only for the students of the dance studio?
Primarily, we would have for our students, but we could look to bring an adult band that wants to come in and rehearse on an evening for a couple hours.
Okay, okay. So I just wanted to just say this. This application came in in 2013, and it has been with the planning department. It was reviewed, and a memo was issued by the previous township planner, Sam Rizzo. I reviewed his review, I have also reviewed the previous zoning officer, Mike Sedinsky's review, and I concur with most of the comments made there. Yesterday, the township engineer and myself, we visited the site, and it just happened because one of the issues raised by the zoning officer was that, you know, would this generate more sound and would it impact the neighborhood with the loud noise? So the township engineer, myself, visited the site, it just so happened that we met Dr. Griggs, and we, he ran the decibel test in front of us. So I have to say, the air traffic is really loud, like, in the parking lot, Nicole and I couldn't hear properly because of the air traffic, and plus, to add on to that, Route 18 is also very noisy. We did walk inside because I believe some construction had started prior, and that's how you came in front of the boat, too. So we did see the insulation and the double walls on the second floor. So with the sound, I really don't have any concerns, although the zoning officer had raised that. We mentioned to Dr. that probably the windows were the only part that was non-double, that didn't have really too much insulation, and maybe he should just add curtains, thicker curtains to block sound from there, if it ever goes out. Wasn't the case, though. Wasn't the case, though. That's, that's pretty much it. I do have some questions, but it's for the other people who testify professionally.
I understand, and so the Board will know, there's no alteration to the exterior of the building whatsoever?
No. Nothing, nothing.
Only interiors?
Only interiors.
Board members, do I left any questions of the applicant?
I have one question, but I live right there, and you can't even imagine how loud the place is. First, when they come over, and they come over every five minutes. And I know this place very well. Shalali's just right across the road. He can't be any louder.
What types of instruments will you be instructing?
Drum, guitar, piano, voice.
No brass or woodhouse?
We would love to have that. I know there's a real need for it. Yeah, there's a real need for it, just.
Yeah.
Okay. Unfortunately, music is, you know, kind of a dying art, it seems. Anything else, Mr. Swat? Am I right? Any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Tosh.
Yeah, the, so anybody off the street who has a band also could rent the space for, like, on that time, or would they have to be like a, a paying member to the organization there, or how would that work?
They would probably just rent by the hour.
The space?
Or if they wanted to record something, we probably would do that during the day. You know, if it was a professional band that wanted to come in and record something, they would want absolute silence, so maybe that would be something that could occur during a weekday where there's nobody there.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
With the noise being so loud, how about an emergency situation? How do you get their attention, your students?
That's a good question. We do, they do have flashing lights, yeah, so there's flashing and there's loud-pitched sirens, but, yeah. Am I right? Counselor?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
And I think it's, it's one of the comments that the township planner, previous township planner had made, that since, and that's why I asked you, would it be rented to outsiders? So, since these rooms could be rented to outsiders, will your agreement have some sort of language that has rules and regulations so that there's no misuse of these, this area past seven o'clock or eight o'clock?
Yes.
And I think, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I think in addition to that, what I wanted to make sure that the board understood for that level of comfort is that an employee of the facility would, would always be there when those areas are used to make sure that they're not misused or that times don't overrun.
The, the other, I know Mr. Rizzo had written in length about the type of use, so that everybody understands. The applicant was approved use variance with, with allowance that they could use it for performing arts. The band rehearsal is slightly different from that, and that's why it is included as an expansion of a non-conforming use, because this, it's not just training, it's meant for practice, it's going to be rented. So, Ms. Rizzo, Mr. Rizzo makes a point that probably the board should consider that one of the condition of approval should be that this band rehearsal remains to be akin to accessory uses, and it's not, it doesn't become a principal structure, principal use, because if it becomes a principal use, then probably the, the original application is deviated to some extent. So, do you agree that the band rehearsal would be restricted to the second floor and wouldn't?
Yes.
Yeah, I think physically, the building wouldn't allow for anything other than that.
I agree.
Yeah.
That's it.
Thank you. Anything else from the doctor?
No, bring up Roy and let him take you through the, the floor plan, okay?
Thank you. Board, turn us away.
Mr. Quackenbush, you solemnly swear the testimony, the year before this board should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your full name and spell your last name.
Roy Quackenbush, Q-U-A-C-K-E-N-B-U-S-H, a card for the stenographer.
Roy, if you could just share your, your, your educational background and your, your affiliation?
Graduate of the New Jersey Institute of Technology in 1979, licensed architect since 1984. I have appeared before this board, oh, I guess a few times.
I just want you to put that on the record, we are very familiar with the Quackenbush as well, so we accept.
Roy?
Thank you.
Thank you. Roy, you can see that we have your floor plans, those are your plans that you prepared?
They are.
If you could just maybe take the board around the floor plans and just kind of get it on the record, what it is that the proposed renovations are?
We're going to speak about the second floor, which was office and break room. What that was converted into were two rehearsal rooms. I don't have my laser pointer, but you can see them, they're noted on the plan, and a control room for recording and a vocal booth. There's also a mechanical room, and there remains a small break room.
It's been submitted with the plans, but I think just to keep track of it.
I do not have a board, though, sir.
Well, that's okay. We, I'll mark it A1.
Thank you. Continue.
The, the idea behind the rehearsal slash recording rooms is not to prevent the sound from going out, but to eliminate as much sound, vibration, and noise, so that when musicians are playing in those rooms, the sound is as pure as possible, to the point of building, let's say, a room in a room. The floor has got rubber vibration isolators. A, a false ceiling is put in, again, to separate, and walls, eliminating right angles, which, you know, will bounce sound off, and so you, and, and to the point of where HVAC, noise coming through the air, noise, buzz of an electrical light. You want to make this as pure space as you can. And in doing that, what you end up with is when somebody's playing in there, you don't hear it out there. I was there for the sound test, or the sound evaluation. And we're not done yet, and I, I believe the engineer brought up, we, we do have to put curtains on the window. We do have to seal the doors, we've got to finish. And the idea is to eliminate sound coming in, but it seems to work in reverse because I was in that parking lot.
Thank you. That was all that I had, Mr. Quackenbush, for. It's a pretty straightforward floor plan, and I wanted him to talk a little bit about the construction techniques, so he's available for, for any questions.
Mr. Swat?
Only one question. What is the square footage of the second floor?
Oh, you got me. I'm going to have to look at my notes.
I couldn't find the number, that's why.
No, no way. I apologize, guys, this was prepared in 2013.
Eleven ten?
Yes, it was.
Eleven hundred and ten square feet?
Total, yes. Yep, there it is. It is on the notes, in general notes. This was prepared as a permit document that was going to the town. We were doing this under the New Jersey Rehabilitation Subcode. The altered area, and I don't, oh, I have them in my, wait, I've got them. Unfortunately, I need them now. Yeah, the total altered area, first and second floor, was one thousand nine hundred and forty, mostly on the first floor, eight hundred and thirty on the first, first floor, and, and I apologize for referring to my notes, it's been a while, and one hundred and ten, because that's all we were playing with.
That's it.
Then, the board members to my left. To my right.
No.
Counselor?
Thank you.
Mr. Tosh.
I thought I was counselor.
You are.
There's two of us. Thank you very much, Mr. Quackenbush.
Thank you.
Frank?
Mr. Quackenbush?
We brought Mr. Miskovic aboard to analyze the parking, you know, in, in, in respect to the, the new area that's going to be utilized.
Mr. Rock?
Mr. Miskovic, you solemnly swear testimony before this board should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your full name and spell your last name.
It's Frank Miskovic, spelled M-I-S-K-O-V-I-C-H.
Frank, if you could just share with the board your credentials, your educational background, your, your work affiliation?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional engineer, a state of New Jersey. I've been licensed since 1976, a bachelor's of science and master's of science degree in civil engineering.
Mr. Miskovic is well-recognized by his work, we just wanted to put on that he's still holding a license. I was joking about that. Everyone, he's familiar everyone except.
Thank you very much, Mr. Quackenbush.
Thank you.
Frank, you heard the testimony from Dr. Griggs. I know that you visited the site, and you've done your analysis. If you could just talk to the board a little bit about what, what you did to prepare, and about your analysis about the parking?
All right, I, I think in the backup, you've heard about the hours being changed from nine AM to 10 PM now. Slightly different from what was approved before. But let me give you a little background on how we arrived at those hours. We're concerned, because we only have the, the twenty-three parking spaces, whether that was enough to support this expanded use of the second floor. So what we looked at, we gathered data for two consecutive calendar years of the school, looked at all the class attendees, number of staff and et cetera, and we looked at it hour by hour. I also had the opportunity for the 2017, 2018 calendar year to kind of look at that class size, which was very similar. So they've been fairly consistent. What we found is that classes really don't start till maybe four, four-thirty, Monday to Friday. So from nine AM to four PM, there's nobody using the first floor facility. So we thought, okay, if there is a band that wanted to rehearse, record, or do something in, on the second floor, that's an ideal time because there's no activity going at the site. We come into the hours now when the classes start, the dance studio, the music lessons, we found that from about four, four-thirty to six-thirty, there, in that time range, that was the most activity. And that was because there were mostly young kids that were attending the classes, and the parents, our observation showed, parents would tend to stay with those young kids, they did not leave them. So we had the parents staying, when that class ended, the next class coming in, there's that overlap for a short time period. But the spaces seemed to work. As we got into the later evenings, let's say from about seven o'clock on, the class sizes diminished a little bit in size, but there were the older children, and our observation showed that most parents either carpooled or dropped their child off and went home, and then came back to pick them up. So that was a trend, actually, through the three years that we looked at, as far as activity. So if parents were dropping off, then leaving, we didn't have that great parking demand, so we said, okay, that seems to be a good time period, after seven PM, that we could now have use of the upstairs rehearsal rooms. And by nine o'clock, eight-thirty, nine o'clock, those classes were done, were very diminished. So even if the band rehearsal was extended to ten o'clock, nine to ten, that wasn't creating any particular additional parking. Saturday mornings, there's some classes going on, there's now cheerleading that takes place, but those are not one hour, they're there for several hours, so it's usually a drop-off and then come back later to pick up. In the afternoons, there's no classes on a Saturday, so having the classes run from about noon to nine PM at night doesn't create a parking issue or conflict with the school itself. So we felt that's how we kind of arrived at those hours for this, for using the second floor. And as Dr. Griggs, I discussed, a lot of that might be for the students that are taking lessons today, can now be combined for a band session or a vocal group type of thing, where they can go upstairs and practice as a unit, if you will, more expanded experience as far as the music lessons. The possibility of using that now for, I have a band that wants to come in and rent the space for an hour or two, that's the possibility, but now it becomes operational. It's, hours are scheduled in advance, so the manager can now schedule X number of people, whatever that would be for that band, to come in at a particular time, so it doesn't overlap with, let's say, their peak times of the school. So that becomes an operational issue, if you will, but I think it can be managed, because everything has to be scheduled in advance, and it's all paid for. But there's a lot of hours throughout the week that there's no activity at the school when this could occur. And it's indicated, too, that, as we talked about this, the current, the approval is for forty-two occupancy levels, thirty-six students, six staff, total forty-two. We're not asking for that to change. So that's why I talk about when it comes down to operation and managing, as long as he keeps that maximum load there to forty-two, I don't see this as a particular parking issue.
Thank you, Frank. I have no further questions available to the board, you're professionals?
Yes. So, the site plan, the approved site plan says that you, you are required to have twenty-one parking spaces, correct?
I believe so.
So, here's the issue, and I, I don't have any doubts on what you testified, it's probably a technicality, but I noticed that in the final plans that was approved, a parking ratio of one space per four hundred square feet was applied. And it says that the required parking is twenty-one. And if you backtrack, that turns out that the parking ratio was based on only the ground floor, not the, not the second floor. I was discussing this with the zoning officer, too, and it is clear, we ran the math, the second floor was excluded. Now, with the second floor use changing, because originally, it was a staff lounge, a storage area, it was obviously not included, but with it turning into rehearsal rooms and band rehearsal areas and recording rooms, it should be included in the requirement. And I think you, it generates at least a parking need of four additional spaces, so there's a shortfall, and you would require parking variance. I am not too sure why the one is to four hundred ratio was ever used, because I went through the code, and I was trying to match up, like, what type of use fits into the ratio. The only, the closest thing I could get is public buildings and public service, but in my opinion, if I had to review it, I would match it with the retail and services, because it's services, actually, because there's no other use that fits in. If you apply that parking ratio, then your parking need is going to be much higher, at least three times of what is required. It's up to the board, and based on your testimony, the board has to decide what would be the required, but with the addition of the second floor space, you would still need a parking variance.
There might be a technical, address that. You heard Mr. Quackenbush say that about a one thousand one hundred and ten square feet on the second floor. That also includes mechanical room, so there's a lot of not usable space, if you will. I believe the one per four hundred was based on a school-type parking requirement, but since that was used on the original approval, if I apply that to the second floor, and just say that's twelve hundred square feet, because I could do the math easier, divided by four, and it's three spaces. So if we, if we required twenty-one for the first four and three for the second, that would be twenty-four, and I guess we would need a variance for the one-space technical.
Right, that's correct, that's correct.
From the technical matter.
Right. And, I mean, just thinking about a training school where kids come in, it's not like kids are going to drive to the school, it's usually parents who drive in, drop off. They generally, I have noticed, they drop off and they come back to pick up the kids, if, if it's little older kids. So, I'm comfortable if that works right now.
I, I think the practical side, being in operation for so many years, that this doesn't fall into any particular use. I think you have to go by the experience, because it's not static. It's not a school where they're there for six, eight hours of the day where you have this. It's a class, they come in for. have this. It's a class, they come in for lessons, and they're gone. So there's this turnover, and it varies throughout the day. And I think what we've shown is that that changes. Also, I'd like to point out, when we're talking about the rehearsal rooms, keep in mind, we're looking at all them, worst case, being used at the same time, to have enough parking. If someone's doing a vocal recording, you're probably not going to have the rehearsal rooms being occupied and bands rehearsing at that same time. Likewise, if a band is in one room and they're doing a recording, the other uses won't be occupied. So I don't know if you get all three rooms being used simultaneously, but that becomes down to scheduling, but leaving it to the maximum that was approved, the 42, I believe, solves a lot of those potential issues with the required parking.
Has it ever happened that you had a parking problem on the site? Are you aware?
Well, I think you have to define it. I'm not aware of any. I will say, when classes are changing, like in any of yours, when one is coming in for the next class and some are leaving, you get that onsite congestion. But when that's gone, when the dust settles, there's been enough parking on the property to satisfy the current schools.
Thank you.
The members to my left, to my right.
So I have a question. So you've never had maximum capacity?
I, I can't answer that. I've looked-
In your count, you didn't see that.
And I've looked at the class sizes for, like I said, almost three years. We did not see it as a capacity issue. I've been out there during the peak time, when the young children were there, and I said there was enough parking, but that interim when they were being dropped off or picked up, that overlapped, there was congestion, there was some delay. But then once the child, let's say the first class was picked up and they left, and the other parents were there for the next class, there seemed to be enough parking on the property.
The members to my right.
Yeah, I just have one.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was out there earlier tonight, and you're right, the parking lot was kind of, kind of empty, but there's a large apron out front that people usually use that to drop off.
Apron, interior?
No, outside, along the street, there's like a-
It's, I think some people do. I think it might be more a matter of convenience than a necessity, but you do make a good point. Actually, from our site, or basically our driveway, all the way over to, I believe it's Birch, that whole shoulder's been widened. It's actually been a 15-foot wide shoulder, the entire length, which makes it somewhat attractive to park there safely, but there's no, I don't think that's a requirement that we need that.
Right, no, I wasn't sure if you had done that piece along with the road, I didn't really-
I mean, you've seen some, no, I know it's been widened, and it might be conducive to park there sometimes by people, but it didn't seem, I guess the key here is that the space is onsite. We didn't need extra to handle it. It's like, if I can park closer to an entrance, I might, but, you know, but that's just a practical matter.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Allison is my next witness. If I could, I'd like to bring her up.
Thank you.
I've done this before.
Solemnly swear that the testimony to the vital importance of the true, all true, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
State your full names, all your license.
Allison Coffin, C-O-F-F-I-N.
Allison, for the record, if you could please share with the board your licenship, your educational background.
I have a bachelor's degree from Boston College.
Are you a license planner?
I am, yes.
Are you a certified foreman?
Yes, I have.
Is that a prerequisite?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Trump. Allison, if you would take the board through your analysis, please.
Sure. The property that we're looking at tonight was previously granted a use variance approval for development and use as a two-story dance studio, including other performing arts instruction, dance, theater, voice, karate, and cheerleading. The applicant proposes tonight to renovate several second-floor rooms to provide space for band rehearsal and recording studios. These rooms had previously been approved for use as office space, staff lounge, and storage area. The site's in the R15 residential district. The approved and proposed performance, instruction, rehearsal space, and recording studios are not permitted in the zone. The addition of rehearsal and studio recording space on the second floor expands the prior approval of the use and adds a new component to the business that was not considered in the prior application. As such, use variance relief is required to alter and expand the use. The board should certainly pay extra attention to revisiting the negative criteria as they were considered at the previous approval, since the expansion of the use in this case has the greatest potential to impact that. We want to make sure that expanding it doesn't result in any detriment. As far as bulk requirements, there are no site changes proposed which impact bulk conformance, though it appears that we may need variance relief for one parking space. It's my opinion that special reasons exist for the granting of the requested use variance, and that the site remains particularly suited to the proposed use, and there is no significant detriment to the zone plan or the surrounding residential properties that would result from the granting of the requested variances. Special reasons exist for the proposed use on this site in that it advances the purposes of the municipal land use law, and the site remains particularly suited to the proposed use. The board previously found that this site was particularly suited for use as a school for the instruction of performing arts. The proposed application does not change the nature of the use significantly, and certainly not to an extent that it would impact the particular suitability that was previously determined to exist. The changes expand this use in three ways. First, in terms of floor area, the applicant proposes to expand instruction and rehearsal space to the second floor. In terms of the business, the applicant proposes to add that music rehearsal and recording studio use to the approved performing arts school, and that that space may be available to people who are not currently students of the school. And in terms of the hours of operation, the prior approval limited the hours of operation from Monday and Fridays from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., Tuesday and Saturday mornings. And the current application includes the expansion of the hours from Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So we have three ways in which the use is being expanded. None of them involve the expansion of the building or modifications to the site itself. The site remains particularly suited to the use despite these proposed changes. The addition of music rehearsal and recording space enhances the public benefit of the use by offering an additional type of performing art use to the community. The rehearsal studio, rehearsal and studio recording space is a common and emerging accessory use to music instruction, which is a part of the use that was previously approved. Modern music instruction often includes a group band component and rehearsal space to allow for students to refine their skills and achieve their desired end result, which is performance typically in a group. These spaces are commonly made available in off-hours to local bands as practice space, but they are an integral part of music instruction. So I'm finding with my own son, who has just switched to a program elsewhere that has a group component, students practice quite a bit more on their instruments when they have other students that they will let down if they don't practice. If they're just letting down themselves, they rely on their parents to yell at them. Many music instruction facilities now also include a recording space for students to prepare demos, and they often make this space available to outside musicians as well. So these facilities, as the applicants are proposing, is an increasingly customary accessory use for music schools, and in this case enhances this facility for the public in Old Bridge. There's no detriment, in my opinion, to the expansion of the use. There will be no change in the number of students and instructors present on the site at any one time. The prior approval limited the occupancy of the site to 42 people, and there is no change to that proposed. The music rehearsal and recording spaces that are proposed will have full sound insulation and attenuation, so there will be no noise impact that would result from these spaces outside of those rooms, let alone on the surrounding neighborhood. The expanded hours allow for the rehearsal space to be used outside of peak instruction hours by the general public, which will ensure that the applicant will not exceed the number of occupants identified in the prior approval while having full utilization of those spaces. The proposed expansion does not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the master plan or the zoning ordinance as well, as the board previously found that the zoning permitted or conditionally permitted similar uses, including recreation, childcare, and educational uses, has not changed. And the board also previously found that the site is unique in its reverse frontage on Route 18, which makes it not suitable for the residential uses that are envisioned in the R15 zone, and this is a condition that also hasn't changed. So it's my opinion that the expansion that's proposed does not create any additional detriment to the master planner's zoning ordinance.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions of Allison.
I have questions.
Board members to my left, the board members to my right.
No.
None?
Thank you for answering. I have no further witnesses. We can open up to the public.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Kozic. Yeah, absent any witnesses, I am open to the public at this time. This is a matter 4-16Z located at 475 Marlboro Road. This is R.L.G. Allison, modify second floor usage for music instruction. Anyone here in the courtroom this evening want to be heard on this matter, please stand there or come forward. No one has, I'll close the public portion. Any final comments?
No, well, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. It's an application for an existing business in town. They saw a need in their own business for an additional use utilizing the upstairs, has been discussed at this evening for the recording. It seems to be appropriate, based on Coffin's testimony, Mr. Miskovic's testimony, to do that at this building and that the building and the site could handle it. I think it's interesting, it's, it's something that's new and different and a modification I find unique. I'm glad that I'm working on this project. It was nice to hear the analysis from the applicant's professionals, and I would ask that the board act favorably on the application.
Thank you, Mr. President. It certainly sounds like it's site suitable. The building's existing, as we all know, but you haven't passed it. It's in the strip between Marlboro Road and Route 18, it would be on the northbound side. I think that they succinctly placed on the right what we needed to hear. Before I move for a vote, does anybody have any comments on my left?
No, I still have a question.
Go ahead.
Instruments and everything that you have, is that stored on-site, or do everybody bring their own instruments because they have to take them home?
Well, piano is stored on site.
My guess.
And a drum set, and then drum sets, and then pretty much everything else.
Anybody else have any comments on my right?
No.
Go ahead, Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, as far as like noise ordinance and everything else, that would be by a local ordinance if it did get out of hand or something like that.
Sure, yes. I can tell you that Route 18 needs to be cited, because it's already-
No, I don't doubt you.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're at 70 at the property line right now, which isn't violation, and so, yeah.
My other question would be, say, bands started to, it took off, and hopefully it does, I'd like, I'd like to see everybody's business do good, but you'd never get into a situation where bands would compete with each other or anything like that at the-
Like, you mean, hold some sort of like-
Strictly for practice.
Oh, yes, I believe this is strictly practice and rehearsal, not having a battle of the bands or something like that.
Or something like that, a competition, or that the bands on a certain day or something like that.
That's not your applicant's proposal now.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? And once again, Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Right, right. Yeah, Sunday's off.
Any final comments as well? All right, well, you've heard the application, you've heard the witnesses, does someone, some clients move this for approval?
Motion.
This is, by the way, this is D1 use, correct, Counselor?
A D1 use, but I believe there's also a C1, there's a parking variance, I believe, for one spot.
One spot, so it's a variance, not a waiver, correct?
Which I believe, you know, it's subsumed within the use variance that you're granting. You're finding that it's, the parking is appropriate for what your applicant testified to.
So we're voting or not, but we want to see variance?
Yeah.
I'm fine with that. I just offer that as my opinion, as to what the case law is. Yeah, that's fine.
We are going to vote.
Right, sure.
All right, as to D1 use, does someone move it?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving second, roll call, please.
Walker, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Dugger?
Yes.
Mr. Kozic?
Yes.
Mr. Tom?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
I think music instruction is very important, teaches you so many different things. My vote is yes.
Chairman Tom?
Yes. We now have a C variance for one spot, correctly. You're short one according to the-
The calculations look like we need 24, and we have 23.
It's a C variance for one parking spot, so does anyone move it?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? Roll call.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Dugger?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Tom?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with what Mr. Walker was saying, that perhaps doctors will compete with these buns, and we'll get an idle fight.
(laughing)
My vote is yes.
(inaudible).
Thank you very much. You guys had the gymnast, now, right? You had the gymnast. Yeah, I mean, come on, Olympia, that's pretty good.
It's not, it's not some gymnast.
Chairman, just one thing, just so it's clear, I think there are a couple of conditions, just so that we're all in agreement. I think the occupancy, the applicant's agreement, the occupancy must remain the same.
Yes.
And that will remain a condition in resolution. The hours will be specified as agreed. And the last thing, one of the initial comments from the catch-up planner had to do with the use on the second floor, so this band rehearsal use is limited to the second floor, will not be included on the first floor, right? That will remain as previously, the use as previously.
There is presently music instruction which occurs on the first floor, which will continue, but the band rehearsal, and that's limited to the floor plan that's shown, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
All right, that board ends our agenda for this evening. Ms. Overman, anything else?
Just reminding everybody, the next meeting is the 18, and it's a first-class, the family's regular, and then there'll be a special meeting.
Will we wear costumes like that for Halloween?
Only if you want.
That's all, move for adjournment?
Motion.
More favor?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker, adjournment?